Welcome to the zoning board meeting of November 15, 2022. My name is Marty Aikens. I apologize for being a few minutes late. My daughter had brain surgery. I've been really busy off today. Probably have four hours sleep. So if I screw up tonight, just give me a little, give me a break.
Thank you.
So we're trying to put everything together for the family and everything's good right now. Thank God. I'm sorry. Anyway, let's get into some business we gotta do here tonight. First of all, if you could shut your cell phones off or your pages. If anyone wants to talk, please step outside and try to hear everyone we can. There's no microphones in this place. I don't think we can afford them, but...
Microphones.
Well, you're waiting like 12 years. I'm in New Orleans, 20, but someday we'll get them. My name is Marty Aikens. This is Vice Chair Mr. Redell, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien, Board Members, the Head of Inspection Services, Mr. Duca, Commissioner, and Mrs., she's our clerk, Mrs. Noonan. Anything else? Did I miss anything? Probably not. Probably. Anyway, let's get into old business. I got something here. The last case.
ZB8-2274.
Case number ZB8-2274. They want a request to withdraw. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, ZB8-2274, Michael Dolan for variance to install two electric vehicle charging stations with display screens in the stop and shop plaza, the parking lot, the premises numbered 497, Southern Artery Quincy. Make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, so move. Under old business, case number ZB8-2171, Attorney Patrick Foley for variance to demolish the existing single-family home and build a new two-family home, town-style home with the premises number 49 Shea Street. The representative here, Councilor, you are the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley. I'm the attorney for 49 Shea Street. This property is located in the residential B zoning district. This is our fourth time before this board tonight about this project. We have tried to listen to the neighbors' concerns, the board's concerns, and we've actually reinvented this project to try to fit into the neighborhood with some of the issues that they had with it. Since our last meeting here, we've had a neighborhood meeting which was pretty well-attended. We went over some of the changes that we did make. So what I'm going to do right now is just go through the changes that we made on this project from where we were and where we are now. And then Dave's gonna get up and go a little more detail about the building design, how we've changed that as well. We dropped each unit of bedroom. It was originally gonna be, one was gonna be three bedrooms. It's out two. The rear setback was originally 14.4. We changed that to 21 feet, and again, now it's 25 feet. The FAR was originally .75. We dropped it to .69. We've come back and we've dropped it to .66. The building height has actually been dropped a foot. The neighbors didn't like the raised deck in the backyard. We've changed that to a new yard-level deck. And originally, there was an open-air roof deck, which is 550 square feet. We cut that in half to 235 square at one point, and we closed it. And after the last hearing, we've just gotten rid of that completely, so there's no roof deck. The roof design, the building design, has been adjusted to fit more into the neighborhood. And Dave's just gonna go over some of the building design and roof design details.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Pat said, we've pretty much reinvented the architectural language of buildings to fit more with the neighborhood architecture. Specifically, we've utilized a lot of awning, you know, features, gables, hip roofs. I put some of the building in on the sides to make it much more, give it some, you know, contour, I guess. So in the light, in the natural light, you see shadows going in where the building's set in, where it's coming out, it'll be highlighted. So I have dormers on the front and rear of the building along the top edge, at least the gaze over the furniture here. These little pine rooflets give, break up the mass of the building as well. We're utilizing different materials, siding, parzon, vertical, again, to break things up and not make it look like this monolithic structure, give it some residential scale. As Pat said, we went over all these changes with the neighborhood in the last neighborhood meeting. Interior-wise, it hasn't, you know, planned it hasn't really changed much. You can see a lot of the features I was saying about when we pulled the building wall in, that's how we got the FAR down. We also got rid of, well, we changed the pole depth to half that on the first floor as a result of losing that square footage. That was way out there, but it was square footage. The rest of the plans, it's kind of the same. Second floor, I had redesigned the entirety because of losing that square footage. Guilty bedrooms could be laid up, could be differently, better. So I think, personally, I think it's a much more attractive building. It's a 12-by-12, I think, roofs, which are much more classical and definitely a lot more structural to the neighborhood. So any other questions that anybody has in the room?
No. Anyone on the board have any questions? Mr. Redell?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Himmel?
I'm good. No questions.
So Brian?
Ah, no, not at this time.
About the roof there, the way you did the hip roof, you know, those are, that's important for the people that live around you. I think that was a good thing. I like that. This is parking. Thank you, guys. You may have a seat. Is there any of you that wanna speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? First call. Second call.
I'll speak quickly.
John, can we just swear everybody in, please?
Everybody?
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, Mr. Chin, go ahead.
Sure.
Anybody who's gonna speak tonight?
Anyone stand up if you're gonna speak tonight at all. If you don't take an oath, you don't get to speak.
Thank you.
If anyone's gonna stand up, take an oath. If you don't wanna take an oath, you're not gonna speak. Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing? I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John O'Neal, Phil, 62 Grand Mall Road. I just wanna say that, you know, this is one of the best works of back and forth that I've ever seen in all the meetings. I mean, they've come back and they've made the most changes, so trying to make the neighbors happy. So I'd just like to see when things work out. We get new growth, the neighbors are happy, and I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Second call. Third call. Call up, party hearing closed. Anything change in the DPW? No? Yeah, everything's the same. Is there anyone opposed or undecided?
Anthony, hold on one second. Do you wanna have the counselor come up?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I just thought you wanted people to speak.
I didn't know if you wanted people to speak first.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, 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 that's what we, that's all I was trying to say. Good, fire away.
Anthony Adronico, Ward Two, Counselor. First, Marty, I hope that your daughter makes a quick recovery.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
I hope that all works out, especially given the holiday season.
I had like four hours sleep in two nights, I know.
I understand. Anyway, moving on to the business portion. This has dragged on for a little more than a year now. As Attorney Foley did mention, we did have another community meeting where these particular set of plans were presented to a well-attended public meeting. And to his point, they have definitely changed the original plan from where it once was. Now, that being said, just because there were, have been a bunch of changes and that you're getting kind of closer and closer to not needing a variance, that still doesn't mean that this type of project fits the neighborhood itself. I've heard a few different times the board has talked about projects need to fit within the essence of the neighborhood. And the reason you have a zoning board that grants variances is because sometimes the rules that we have them set up don't allow for really great projects within the city, and sometimes you have to make some exceptions. Unfortunately, I'm not able to say that this is one of those instances. The lot that this is on is incredibly small. I think it will have an outsized impact by having two units there. I think that the max FAR and the minimum lot for dwelling are the variances that are still being sought, and that will have an outsized impact on the neighborhood. I can get into everything that you've already seen through emails, but I'd like to be first on the agenda, and hopefully I'll just wrap it up quick. You've seen why the neighborhood's opposed to this. I stand with the neighborhood against it. It's too large of a space for, it's too large of a proposal, rather, for what's there right now. And just because changes have been made doesn't mean that it's a good project as is. So with that, I ask that you reject the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, I might, we ended at the meeting. How many, how many people? And what was the big thing? Just the FAR? Is that what it was?
The main issue, I believe, which I believe Attorney Foley can speak to, was the number of dwelling units and the overall size of the project, the physical stature of it within the neighborhood. And genuinely, this is one of the smallest lot sizes I've seen request a variance in quite some time. I think that in particular. I'll give it to them. The drawings look really nice. I get it. But when you really visualize it on that lot size, that was sort of the issue. A couple of people did reach out and say, you know, if this was, say, an addition to the existing single-family home where you're just going up to a second floor, said maybe we'd be okay with that. But the second dwelling, up to three stories for that neighborhood, was something that they were opposed to. In addition, I do think it's also important to note that at that meeting, it was discussed that the property had not been kept up to city standards just in terms of...
The whole time as we've been doing this, no one's been down there?
Overgrowth, you know, no one's picking up the mail. And it was mentioned at that meeting from the neighborhood, hey, if you can get someone out there just to cut the grass and stuff like that, that's what had been mentioned. I do like to be lean on these things, so I gave it a week and a half to two weeks before reaching out to Jay Duca and Inspection Services to send someone out there. I think that's, you know, the right way to do that. That's how I handle this is. And ultimately, we did still have to send someone out there two weeks later after that meeting where this was mentioned in particular. So I think there are a few issues in general, but that was the main issue from the neighborhood.
That's a big issue with me when you come here for something. Make sure the neighborhood's happy, keep the place as clean as you can. Afterwards, I don't know what's gonna happen. But beforehand, you think you would show a good hand, wouldn't you? Four races? Yeah, I hear you, Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Second call. Line up. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Laura Moy. I live at 41 Silver Street, which is right around the corner from the proposed building. To follow up on what the councilman just said, I can confirm the property's not being kept up. I walk my dog every day, twice a day, around that block, and I have to go out around the brush that's not been cut because you can't walk on the sidewalk anymore by the house. I think my real concern is I don't understand why we would grant so many variances. It is a small lot, and they're asking for, basically, take almost the entire lot and put a building that covers almost the whole thing. I work for the union. I do lots of visits in South Boston. It looks a lot like the South Boston buildings I see. I don't live in South Boston. It's a lovely place. I live in Quincy with my daughter and my dog.
You don't want pass sugar from each other?
And I, no, I don't want pass sugar. And I don't, you know, it just, it's clearly gonna be a rental property, and I don't think it's gonna add to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else? Last call. Call up, party hearing closed. You know...
Can I press use...
Uh, no, no. And we'll give you something at the end, but this is what, this comes in front of us sometimes, buildings are being built, no one takes care of nothing, they just leave it there, and they leave the junk everywhere, and it goes on for a year. I mean, this building, we're talking a year. And you left brush there, and you leave this there, and you leave that there. Maybe I'm not in the right frame of mind to even talk tonight, so I'll just let it go. That really bothers me in the neighborhood that you think you would be there, meet the neighbors, keep the yard as clean as you can for whatever's there. Even if the buildings are disgraced, keep the yard clean. With that, I'll just, I'll just quit right now. Any comments? Mr. Redell?
Look, I think they've made a ton of changes to the property. It's res B.
Yep.
You get a better side yard setback on the left side for cleaning up the property, adding new growth. I understand the neighborhood concerns. But again, it's res B. There's a two-family dwelling next to it. There's a two-family dwelling across the street from it. Both of them are on somewhat small lots. I don't see like a huge character change from the neighborhood. I think it's, it's a vast improvement from what's there currently. So, you know, that being said, I'll be in favor tonight.
Okay. Mr. Himmel?
I think they've come a long way from last year since we've looked at this. I like the design. I understand it's a small lot. It is res B. I'm a little taken back at the condition of the property. I find it a little bit insulting, not just to us, but to the neighbors, so I'll reserve my opinion.
Say it in here?
I'm not gonna say yea and nay right now.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chin?
I concur with Mr. Redell in everything that he just mentioned. I will wait to hear from the applicant regarding the condition. I think he was going to address that, and I think, and I'd like to hear what he has to say about that before I make, pass any judgment on the issue of condition. But in terms of the, what has been presented and the amount of good faith that's been shown, and the amount of effort and the improvements, I would be in favor until I hear, after I hear what he has to say.
Still, Brian?
My opinion is that this doesn't look anything like the original that we had.
Yeah, I'm talking...
We had a lot of difficulties with the original part of the project, which they've made some, in my opinion, some improvements with their proposal.
Right.
There's small lots everywhere. The parking addressed in the front, that's, and just the work that they've done to me to get to where they are, I think, and the improvements that made them overlooking that, I think is, is a vast difference. You can only do so much at so, at so many points, and you're not gonna make everybody happy, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Counselor, does you wanna say something? Client wanna say something?
Yeah. First of all, I apologize for, I came up specifically to take care of the property, and I did promise that I would take care of it after the last neighborhood meeting. I've been in oral surgery that I wasn't planning on for the last three days, so I couldn't do it, I couldn't attend to it immediately as I promised. But I'm still planning on taking care of that immediately, as soon as I'm able to tomorrow, if I can.
How about a year?
It was taken care of within that time. I think, I think the guy who was doing it was doing also the neighbor's yard, and all of a sudden, he just fell out of touch with me, so I apologize for that. But that's not any indication of all...
No, because that, that's really, that's a stickler with me, really.
Of course. I apologize for that. Absolutely.
You know, this board has voted not to make, even to vote, come back in three months. We see things for three months with properties that are cleaned up. So thank you, thank you for, sorry about your surgery.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask just one neighbor here. How long has that been the way it's been? Anyone?
I don't think they've, since their catches were removed, they've grassed the entire...
No, I just wanna know. How long has it been overgrown and not cut and all that? Has it been a month, three months? We got it a month, you know...
Well, 2022, no, the single family that grassed up, it was just turned back. 2021, one month.
All right, thank you.
We just, I know, I know. I get it.
Was that 21? Yeah. Well, thank you. I thought I got to finish myself. Thank you.
Mr. Chin, would you like to say anything now? Anything different? I don't know.
Well, it sounds like there's a difference of, a factual difference that's being put forth by some of the neighbors. Looks like it wasn't taken care of that well.
This past year, it was the miscommunication. The guy who was there, I thought he was still doing it, and I didn't realize that. All the neighbors, that's no...
Thank you.
My recollection is you're from out of state.
Yeah, I know, I am.
I mean, it's a, I understand that they should have taken care of the property. Hopefully, if this passes, they will, you know, not let the property go to waste like...
Too much money, not the...
It'll be the best-looking yard in the whole city, hopefully.
So, any other comments?
No.
Brian, it's up to you now. Wanna make a motion?
ZB8-22, 2171, Attorney Patrick Foley for variances to demolish the existing single-family home and build a new two-family townhouse-style home on the premise number 49 Shea Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance. Second.
On the motion?
Aye.
I meant, on the motion, I just, I just want to say that this property hasn't been taken care of in a year. The FAR's pretty well out there, so just on the motion, that's all I wanted to say. Anyone in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Aye. 41, you in. Thank you, Mr. Foley. Thanks, buddy. Rather than the tonight's agenda, STR 22-2, Jin Hui Chen for a permit to operate a short-term rental on the premise number 24 Walker Street. The applicant, their representative here.
Come on up.
Name an address for the record, please.
Jin Zhang, 24 Walker Street.
All right. Now, I understand you didn't turn in the right paperwork. Mr. Duca, you said it's all set?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right. It's new to everybody.
Yes, new to us, too.
Right. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes. STR 22-2, Jin Hui Zheng for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premise number 24 Walker Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance. Oh, the special permit, sorry.
Second. On the motion? Standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, so move. All set.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Rather than tonight's business, STR 22-4, Lippi Magahas, sorry about that, for a special permit to operate a short-term lease on the premise number 59 Pond Street.
Philippe Magahas, 59...
Name an address for the record.
Philippe Magahas?
Yep.
59 Pond Street.
All right. Why don't you tell us what you're doing there? And, hey! All right, everyone, we're outta here. See you next month. All right, who's sticking there, John?
Who's got the candle?
John, who's leaning against the lights?
Someone out here.
Someone is.
Lean against it again, Phil, come on.
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Laura. Sorry. Go ahead, tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Brian.
Operating a short-term rental?
Yep. Have you operated in the past?
Since 2019.
2019?
2019.
And how many apartments do you have in the home?
It's a three-family house.
And you're renting one of them?
I'm doing with both, both of the two rented units.
Say that again, I'm missing something. Let me see.
It's a total three units. I live in one and rent the other two.
Short-term, you want them both?
Yes.
All right.
And you were operating, you were operating both as a short-term rental for the last, since 2019?
Since 2019.
Okay. Any, any issues? Have you had any neighborhood issues, any parking issues?
None. No, not at all.
Are you renting individual rooms or whole apartments?
Uh, whole apartments.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chin?
No questions. No more questions.
All right. You can only rent one. You can't rent two. Do you know that?
I, I did read the law. I was just waiting for it.
So what are we doing now?
I probably would just convert it to over 31 days instead of doing weekly or daily.
Mr. Duca, you take care of all that?
Yes, the certificate will, will, the certificate, which you will do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor?
I just wanna say something. That's confusing.
Do you wanna speak in favor or not?
I'm on the side.
Well, I'll call you later. I'll call you later. Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Second call. Third call. Call up, party hearing closed. Anything on the correspondence? Nope. You reviewed the above-referenced project and have no comments. John, anyone undecided or opposed? Thank you.
John O'Neal, Phil, 62 Grand Mall Road. Maybe it's a question for Mr. Duca. So if you have a, you know, like, I don't understand why he couldn't rent both units. I mean, if those were three different condos and three different people owned all three different condos, they would have the right to rent each unit as an Airbnb. So what's the difference between, like...
City ordinance, John.
City ordinance, short-term rental. One.
You can only have...
Short-term. So you don't have 900 cars on your street.
One per dwelling unit, and so we consider like a two-family, three-family, four-family...
Mr. Duca, why don't you explain to him? I don't think he would. He would, please.
Thank you. So if it's a three-family home owned by one person, you could rent out one of the units. If it's a three-unit condo, each unit owner could rent out the unit for nine months. They have to live there for three months.
But like right now, that gentleman that was just up here has the right that the three tenants could live there, and those three people could each have two cars. It could be six, so, I mean, they have the right to have three different tenants.
The ordinance is written, so he owns a whole building, all three units. He can rent out one of them, only one.
Yeah. Counsel, my car, he's here to discuss that.
Well, no, I just wish the city house would... John, John, John.
Sorry, David.
Now that you know, John, really, we got a lot of cases. Now that you know...
I'm gonna say, every, every week, it's potentially, there's thousands and thousands of residential B property.
John, John, John. Are you in favor or not in favor, and why?
I think anyone who owns property has the right to rent it, so I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Oppose them on the side. Second call. Third call. Counselor, do you wanna say anything about this? Give me a little explanation out of the smartness of that counsel that I love so much.
Those chambers. Watch out, you're on the Christmas list, too.
Third call. Yeah, I'll be on the Christmas list. I already am. Outta here. Promise? Third call. Call up, party hearing closed. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. I'm impressed the guy actually read the ordinance, so I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
Hey, I guess I'm in favor.
You don't have to be.
Case STR...
So wait, you wanted to tweet, I guess.
I was a long one.
STR 22-4, Felipe Magalhiz for special permit to operate short-term rental on the premises number 59 Pond Street, Quincy, for one unit.
One unit.
Make a motion to grant the special permit.
Second.
On the motion? Standing on all in favor? All right, post, so move. ZB8-22-8, C Street Properties for LLC for variance, special permit, floodplain, special permit to remove the commercial structure and build four-unit residential building with parking, number 1092 C Street. Counselor, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, Ed Fleming for the record on behalf of C Street Properties. We're here again tonight, specifically, Mr. Chairman, at your request, that we, that my client reconsideres converting the entire building and maintaining a commercial unit in the building. So that's what we've done tonight. Brian Donahue will show you in more detail. We've essentially, instead of converting the two first-floor units to residential, one of those units now will be maintained as a commercial unit. And Brian, why don't you just show those?
Chairman, members of the board, Brian Donahue, Don, you are at X here, Quincy. If you remember from two months ago, we presented four units for the site, which is the laid area of about 70 feet under square feet with an east bench and a rear porch of the site, your parking, your nine parking spaces, four, four units. What we've done since that last meeting is we've gone from four units to three units, and we've taken an area from the ground floor and made it into a commercial space, about about 703 square feet. So we still have three, so we've gone from four units to three residential units plus the commercial. The other three, the remaining three units, one enters from the back, which is our accessible unit, is, they're all two bedrooms, two baths, so on the ground floor, facing the parking lot, there's one unit on that level. On the street level, on C Street, there's one unit plus the commercial space. On the second floor, there is two, two bedrooms. Existing, this is the proposed, I'm sorry. So another thing that we've done, I explained this last weekend, I don't wanna go into too much detail because I've already done that, I just wanted to explain the changes with it. We did move the building eight feet off C Street and eight to 10 feet off the neighboring apartment here. We've got a footprint that's 20% smaller than the building that's there right now, and we think it's... um, we think it's, uh, not a detriment to the neighborhood, it's a more attractive building, obviously. Um, we've got a few stories with a hip roof, uh, double room windows and so forth, and also we made provisions for signage outside. We would have to build two across to the city anyway for a little signage, so we're just showing this generically right now, we would have this unit on C Street. So the eventualities is that we dropped the building down two feet as well, because the retail space now was accessible, whereas we had steps up before for the apartment. So the maximum height on C Street is 28, I think is pretty modest. Uh, in the backside, it's, uh, on the back part of the lot, it's 30. So that's basically the gist of the change to the basis of the analysis.
So as you can see, the, the building's very similar in height to the building next door, and the new, and the new commercial unit will be about 700 square feet, which is very similar to the size of the existing ice cream store right now, so we'll maintain a, a use for a similar type user in, uh, in that area. And the, in the, in the parking remains the same in the back, there'll be nine parking spaces now for three residential units, so there'll be additional two spaces that will be available essentially for, uh, folks that might utilize that commercial space. That's our...
Counselor, that looks awesome.
Excellent.
That looks so awesome, really. Gotta clean up that, make it nice.
We don't have any flooding issues in the back?
Yeah.
No, it's how it looks like. They actually put a rain system a few years ago. The parking lot has got an infiltration system there.
Okay. And it's kind of...
And there'd be much more controlled use of that. I know the neighbor was here last time and, and this kind of some uncontrolled use of that parking area in the back. This will be much more controlled now, because she was concerned about, uh, her children kind of playing out in that driveway in the back and being concerned about cars and things of that nature, and this will be much safer.
It's gonna be all fenced in, so when they pull in, they'll be there, and they'll have their own, next door will have their own, right?
That's right. They'll be, yeah, be very, very clearly marked.
What I saw, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have no questions. I think, I think, uh, it's exactly what I asked for, and I'm glad, I'm glad it's there, really. It's gonna look nice.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
Looks like a nice building from the front, looks like it fits the neighborhood, and you got parking. I got no questions right now.
And you've got a small retail shop, so...
Yeah.
Can we clarify the right-of-way? Did you get that...
It is, it's as of record, and it is actually owned by this particular property, it has a right-of-way across that back lot.
Okay.
That was done, um, a long time ago as well.
Right, but the neighbor seemed to misunderstand.
Yeah, the neighbor, the neighbor misunderstood that, I believe she rented the house or rents the house, and I clarified that. I actually had a nice conversation with her after the meeting, and we talked about that and clarified that.
Great, thank you, Counselor.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? Counselor!
Can I go before Daddy?
I can get you off. Never happened. Never happened.
Dave McCarthy, Ward 1, Counselor, 48 Whitney Road, and, um, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know what? Building's always been blighted, yeah, lighted, or whatever you want to call it. The commercial is right where how many scoops is now, so maybe we can utilize that. The other half of the building down bottom wasn't utilized, had bars on the windows and, uh, forever. And, um, as Mr. Donahue said, um, we pick up eight feet off the street, we're not right on top of the sidewalk, they pick up also some extra footage in the back corner, because they went from four down to three.
All right.
Um, so, uh, I think it's a, a, a nice job, it keeps the taste of commercial, and maybe somebody can do something.
Little bake store or something like that, come down, right?
A nice coffee shop for you when you're headed out in the morning.
Hey, there you go.
There you go. I support you. Thank you.
So is the woman gonna be standing there handing me coffee, or a guy right there? You just fall up and there you see it again? Come on, Counselor, you can get that done. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? John? Can't speak.
John Rutherford, 62 Grand Mall Road. I actually feel bad, because I got confused. I thought that when I spoke on that Chase Street project, I was speaking on this project. And I was wondering why Counselor...
You know, everyone's watching, John?
Uh-huh.
Everyone's watching.
Well, I don't care. But, I mean, I just want to hit on the record at least, I mean, I feel bad, because I actually spoke against that one on Chase Street before. I mean, I stood up here and said that that was one of the best projects, and that certainly isn't. I, I meant this one. We do desperately need new growth throughout the city, so...
You gotta change the quote.
I mean, they, they did change that C Street ones, uh, Chase one significantly, so that was true. One of the three things I said was accurate. But the bottom line is that, um, this is good new growth, um, this is a great project, and I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else? In favor? Second call? Third call? Call, our part of hearing closed. Anything you want, DPW?
Any letters or comments?
Get, uh, those weapons.
I don't know that happen, or...
Yeah. Yep. Nothing. All right. Uh, DPW has nothing. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Last call? All right. Uh, I'm in favor.
Yes, thank you. Nice project, appreciate it.
In favor?
I'm in favor.
Likewise.
On the motion, please?
ZBA 22-8, C Street Properties LLC for a variance, special permit, floodplain, special permit to remove the commercial structure and build a new four-unit residential building with parking on the premises number 1092 Chase Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance, special permit and floodplain, special permit.
Second. On the motion? Stand down, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So moved. Thank you, Counselor. Great job.
And that might have been the first time that Rutherford actually spoken for my project.
Counselor, he, Counselor, he actually did it twice. Counselor, he actually did it twice, he just didn't know.
Do you want to go back for a second, or just open it up and then you'll break them in? What do you want to do?
Put those in that file.
Stay.
We got, we got these ones. We have to sound, uh, because they work against the neighbors, uh, to eliminate variance.
I was gonna change the setup here, we lost, but, no, I'm on it. Yeah, why don't you? We can, we can handle that, and, uh, but if this, is these major?
Uh, we changed it from three stories to...
Oh, good. That's not...
That's a benefit.
A benefit, right. Uh, one more. Yeah. Case number, ZBA 2276, Brian LaRoche for variance, finding, special permit, floodplain, and replace the existing non-compliant floodplain, uh, compliant structure with a new flood-compliant single-family home on the premises number 73 Pozzies. The applicant and representative, if you have the floor, name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Brian LaRoche, 67 Mirzav, representing, uh, the applicants, Pat and Kim Bannon, at 73 Pozzi. Um, when we came before you, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, we asked for a continuance, uh, so that we could, uh, work with some of the neighbors, uh, who expressed concerns about our going for variances for the project. So, um, we weren't successful in, in coming to an agreement, but at least, uh, we did agree that we would redesign the project to eliminate the need for any variances. Uh, because the project is located in floodplain, we are in an overlay district, we will still require a special permit. Um, so we took, uh, what was three full stories and modified it to two and a half. Um, and this, uh, property, uh, has an existing dwelling, uh, that's situated in the front corner here. Uh, and what we would like to do, we're gonna be asking for findings for vertical and horizontal extension and non-conforming use, to be able to voluntarily demolish the structure and extend it to the rear and to the front. Um, and so that's, uh, what we'll be asking for tonight, is the finding, and I'll go over the, uh, sections in just a moment, but let me present to you the project. So it looks very similar to what you received originally. Uh, there's no changes, uh, to the first floor. Uh, on the lower level, what we did do is there was some concern, uh, by the neighbors about flooding. This area does flood, and the 2018 storm, uh, there was pretty good amount of water in the area. So we added another, uh, opening to each of these areas here to allow flow-through water. So we've got a overhead door that we can open up in storms to allow pre-flow water, uh, the same here, so the water can go. In addition, we have all the required flood vents, because we're in an AE 12 and 13, so... Uh, so the, the overhead doors are really in addition to the requirements. Uh, so those are the changes that we made to the lower level, nothing to the first. The upper level, uh, is now contained underneath the roof. We've got the roof springing, uh, three feet off the deck, so that conforms to the definition of half-story and the zoning ordinance. Um, and so in front of the dwelling here, uh, we did add a small gable, just because of the geometry change of the house, uh, we felt like we needed to add a little something more to, uh, improve the look. So we have a one-foot bump out here, the gable to the front entry. Uh, and then, um, this is very similar to what we presented before. Uh, and then what we did here, this, uh, portion that stuck out was a little warmer, uh, we just matched up the eve line so that it moves all the way around the house. Uh, so really, that's all the changes that you can see here. Uh, and then, as you move around to the left side of the property, as you go, uh, down here, um, uh, you know, we have just a gable, the, the, we changed the...
Brian, can you put that up top for us, please?
Yep. We changed the pitch of the roof. Uh, since, uh, we lowered, uh, where the roof, uh, springs off the deck, uh, we increased the pitch to be able to get a little bit more living area. So we're still, maximum height to the ridge from average grade length, 35 feet, uh, so that, uh, has not changed, we still stay below. Um, and so, uh, so here's the front, this is the left side, this is the rear. So this looks out towards, uh, Rock Island Cove. Uh, they have a deck off the rear here, and, uh, you can see this is the garage door I mentioned. We added on the back, uh, for cars, but just to allow the pre-flow of water. Same here, there's a patio area underneath the deck, uh, we have a garage door for that. Uh, so this, uh, house is really just two stories of occupied space, the lower level because of floodplain is unoccupied, so, uh, so in order to take advantage of the fact that we had to lift up the structure, uh, we have parking underneath. So we have a two-car garage here, uh, under the main part of the house. There is a single, uh, accessory garage that's gonna be used. He has a, an antique car that he won't, or, uh, that he wants to keep in the garage, and really, again, that's more, uh, to access this, uh, storage area below. Um, this, uh, two-car garage is where they are gonna be parking, uh, their everyday vehicles. Uh, one of the things that we did talk with the clients over the weekend is we were modifying the design. Uh, the surveyor, uh, had the house situated so that the driveway was only, uh, 15 and a half feet, and you wouldn't be able to pull the car and get fully in there. So we were gonna ask the board tonight, too, is if we could push, uh, the dwelling back four feet, uh, in what we proposed in the survey, so that we can get a full, uh, two cars parked in front of the driveway here.
Yeah.
Uh, just to make sure we get the cars off of the road. So...
That's four feet, right?
Yes, we want to move this, the entire structure back four feet, do that.
Now, you still got, it's still three stories. I mean, you got...
Yeah.
Right?
No, uh, it's a half-story. The, the zoning ordinance...
I know. But you're over, what do you, what do you hear, the first? I know, I, I know they're going on it because of floodplain, I get that.
Yeah.
But it's still a three-story structure, it's on the side. You got, you got your first floor where you park, and then two stories to live in, two and a half stories to live in, correct?
Yep. A half-story goes though by the, the...
I know, exactly.
Yep.
Just looking at it. It's important. Cause you're blowing my mind, 35 feet, and then you're saying two stories.
Two and a half stories. So it is, I mean, the, the upper level is with good dormers.
With a roof and that, right, I get it.
Right, so in order to be able to take advantage of the living space on the upper level, uh, there's a lot more, um, area of crawl space along the edges here that we cannot occupy. So it reduced the amount of occupiable area on the upper level because of all those, uh, these shaded area or roof areas that we can't access.
Right, right.
Uh, and then there's, uh, there's pitched ceilings in the rooms now, which we didn't have before. We had light ceilings throughout. So now you have a five-foot mean wall that rises up to an eight-foot ceiling.
No, I liked the, I liked the last one, I tell you, it's a beautiful home.
We, we would like to move forward without any variances, um, and we are gonna ask for a finding, uh, for under, um, 3.47 voluntary demolition of a non-conforming structure.
And just keep those going up.
And allow for the vertical and horizontal extension under 3.45, uh, which allows for those, um, extensions, both vertically and, um, horizontally. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board with any questions.
Question?
Yes.
Looks like you went, like, two and a half feet over, higher than the floodplain is required, correct?
Yeah, that's...
Okay. It's gonna be increased at some point in the...
Of course.
I like that it's, you know, you're, you're more conforming now than you, you were before.
This is true. It is gonna be changing at some point, um, yeah.
You're melting.
Swear to you.
Yeah, the service are...
Yeah, I know. Yeah, probably got a few left, anyway. Yeah, probably got a few left anyway. I have no question, I think it's a beautiful home, I even liked the last one, that was gorgeous. Any questions, Brian?
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the change.
No, I like the last house, this is fine. No questions. No questions, I'm good.
I'm going to put you back up here.
We're going to get Charlie over here, feels left out in the corner.
Feels left out in the corner, you don't want to-
I'm the anchor.
The anchor, there you go.
Calling the writing.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone? First call, please come up. Another Pauzy Street.
Yeah.
What's up, buddy?
Hi.
Good.
Chalk of Tony, look through Pauzy, I've got a ride up the street, looks right to us, I've always supported them.
I like your house. That's nice.
Who's the property?
Yeah. Who's everyone's value, there you go.
It looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Second call? Third call? Call up out of hearing closed. Wait a minute, I just want to see if anyone's opposed here before you come on council, maybe? Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Please step forward. Name and address for the record, please.
Todd Michelle, 151 Rockland Street.
Todd?
Yep.
Okay.
It's across the street, you know, Pauzy meets Rockland at the end, and diagonally across street, I'm here with Diane Wilmot from 148 Rockland, who's directly across the street. I think, you know, it's a nice house, but this lot is, floods a lot. And we're trying to protect our own houses down here, so Pauzy Street runs west to east into Rockland Bay. Rockland Street downhill, Rockland Street runs north to south downhill through this property. This corner is a low point, low point on all of Rock Island, right? And so, you know, I could show you, I don't know how to submit-
No, we understand, all right, you can show us all, I know.
This is that lot, right?
Yeah, let's see it. I just like looking at old pictures.
Yeah, this is 2018.
Yeah?
And then I can show you the after now.
So nothing's going to happen to the house that's there, because it's got floodgates, so if it was in, then it goes out.
That's, that's, that's right. It's protecting the house that's there.
Right, it's protecting the house.
The new house that's being built. Right now, that property, the limit of wave, moderate wave action goes, almost the entire property's in the limit of moderate wave action. What happens in storms, the water's forced up Pauzy Street, there's no seawall, no barrier, and the waves mitigate in this open space of this yard. That's what happens right now.
Everywhere in House Neck, though, it does happen different stuff.
There's seawalls, right? There's no seawall there.
There's no seawall in that corner, right?
Right, there's no seawall at that corner, the waves come up in the street, I live there, I live on the seawall, it's right there. You don't need to be an engineer to know that when you, waves can mitigate in open space, the energy dissipates. We're going to put a house there, right? Whether there's flow-through breakaway panels or not, waves are going to hit that house, the energy's going to go somewhere.
Back out.
That energy's going to go-
Back out.
To my house, across the street to Diane's house, right? That's what's going to happen with the water. And when you look at it, the seas are only going to get higher. The town's mitigation plan, Rockland Street made the plan, right? There's a whole study, Rockland Street's on there, and the cost was high, the benefit was negative for the cost-benefit analysis, and the probability of the city doing anything to address this was zero, low. So it's not going to be addressed, it's going to flood more and more often, and the waves are going to get bigger and bigger. Our properties are going to be impacted, even if you think I'm 10% right, that risk shouldn't be transferred to us, because somebody wants to build a new house on a non-conforming lot, it doesn't make sense. Like, we are aggrieved, we're impacted severely here, we're just trying to protect our own properties, right? There's a, Climate Check is a pretty well-respected climate research group. It said, it rates this property, you put in the address, 92 on a scale of 100 for flood risk. There's an 85% chance by 2050, there'll be a five-foot flood on that problem. So to say that that, we're not going to be impacted by that, it's just, it's just not rational. We are going to be negatively impacted by that, because it's a bigger house, closer to us, and a big wall, where the waves no longer have a place to go, and they're going to hit the wall, and the water goes somewhere. It's going to find its way, it's going to find its way to my house and to Diane's house. That's what's going to happen. So that's practically what's wrong here, I think there's legal issues wrong here, I think there's relief that's required, that's not being requested. I gave one example, I haven't had a chance, so I respectfully request more time to review this, because this got uploaded this afternoon, I haven't even looked at it. But I noticed a three-car garage, the city ordinance is a 20-foot drive, 20-foot wide driveway, no greater than. Well, there's 27 feet at least of driveway here, which is a huge problem down in this area because of parking. So when someone creates a whole driveway, which is there now in front of that house, no one can park in front of their house. But Ms. Wilmot has the house across the street, all the cars parked on her property instead, right? So if she could cut, you would say it's absurd, if she cut six driveways in her property to stop everyone from parking there, why should we allow someone to have a three-car garage with all the driveway facing the street? It's just, it's against the ordinance, it needs a variance if it's going to be allowed. You can't, that's more than a finding. So listen, there's more issues with this, I think we need more time to review it. I think there's more relief required, I don't think the relief will be warranted, and again, we're just trying to protect our own properties, because this is, this flood, this sea is rising, it's indisputable, and we're going to be negatively impacted if this is built there. Thank you.
Question for you. You're 151, when did you build your house?
2011.
So did you have, did you have, had this neighborhood had existing issues at that point?
Yeah. But they're worse now, I can tell you since I've been there much-
I mean, I'm just, I'm just, you see the dichotomy, I mean, you see that, you know, my struggle here, right? So you had variances that you needed at that point?
No, 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 hold on. I, I built-
You were in the floodplain, so you needed a special permit in the floodplain.
I needed a special permit, but I rebuilt on a smaller footprint than the existing home that was there.
Yeah.
I had a variance for height, because the conservation commission at the time wouldn't let me park next to the house.
Okay.
So I had to have parking.
Had to come up.
It's a 25-foot wide lot, there was no other place to park, there was no, they, I had the house designed being at 12 feet.
And where'd you build to, 14?
16, I think.
16.
Yeah, because I had to put the garage on there, there's no choice, there's no choice, right? So again, in the area, this will probably be the neighbor next door to them built on the same footprint recently.
Yeah.
I built on a smaller footprint, five houses down from me built on the same footprint. These are all small houses, like, nobody's building off the footprint. That's what the zoning allows for, you stay on the same footprint.
There's no variance, though, for the footprint.
Right.
There's no variance for the footprint, they're not asking for any variance on the footprint.
I get it, I get it.
So I mean, we don't even, we're not even, we're not even judging, we're on the flood-
Finding. I get it, but there's relief that should be required here, it's not being requested, that's what I'm saying, right? I think the, and 3.45 isn't really applicable to a tear-down, it's applicable to reconstructing existing. 3.47 is involuntary tear-down, then you need to issue a finding, right? That the enlarged building is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
That's what we-
And I'm trying to say to you, even if you think I'm 2% right, it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, because my house is going to be impacted negatively.
I understand.
Again, I mean, that's, that's just the reality of it. It's a nice house, and I don't have anything against everybody, but we have to-
Sure, yeah, yeah, I understand.
Protect our own houses.
I completely understand.
But again, I wish, we need more time, because this just got uploaded today, so that's our request.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Thank you.
Huh? Well, then if you want to come up, take a note.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, in matter of now hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Erin Quigley.
Yeah.
I live at 66 Pauzy Street.
Okay.
Right, literally almost across the street from me. I have no problem at all. I think it's a great thing that they're doing. And I, for the record, when Todd did do his house, not one neighbor gave him a hard time. No. So this isn't, he did it before to the neighbor that bought the house right beside him.
And then there was a little house down there that they tried to build-
Yeah, and he did the exact same thing.
Exact same thing.
Yeah.
And she didn't build it, she ended up, did she sell all, she sold it, didn't she?
She ended up losing so much money.
Didn't she sell that house?
Yeah.
And she bought, and now the guy just fixed it, right?
So now we have like a-
I was there for all that, too. I've been here like 20 years, so I, I do.
Yeah, we have a flat house now. So that poor lady-
I get it.
So-
It's okay, it's okay, sometimes it ain't for some others, I get it.
Yeah.
That's the way I feel, that's the way it is. Anyone else? Thank you for your time. Anyone else want to speak?
Mr. Duka.
Mr. Duka, you are up, sir. I get to question you?
No questions, no soup for you. Thank you, board members. I'd just like to clarify a few things. The city's GIS map and the FEMA map shows that this house is out of the limit of wave action, so it's, it's just in the floodplain. I just wanted to clarify that, and that's all I-
No, there is no way. I mean, it's Rock Island Cove, I know. I live down there.
Well, I have the map open, if you want to look at it, but-
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call up out of hearing closed. Counselor, counsel, you're up, sorry. Huh? Against, or undecided? You're undecided, go ahead, here we go. Sorry, counsel.
Sorry.
He cut you again.
John Roderfeld, 62 Grandma Road. I just want to make this point, this was in a flood zone, I feel bad for the zoning board, because you're put in a bad position because of the conservation board. It's up to the conservation board in our city to protect the water and the, you know, the neighbors, like that first gentleman was talking about. I really think that we should have a plan in Quincy, the floodwaters are rising, and the maps, the numbers are going to go up. I don't think people should be allowed to build bigger than the footprint, but it's up for the conservation people to stop this. This is a very big lot, like, what, like 12,000 square feet, am I correct? Or am I wrong in that?
No, it's 85, was it?
You know, so, so-
It is.
So once, once-
Oh, it is.
Right, so once conservation gives their approval, these, these projects, we got to, you know, conservation has to stop this, or we need new legislation in the city council.
John, are you in favor or against? I, I can't debate. What we're going to do is what stands for six months, I can't do that tonight, please, I'm just not in the-
No, I'm just, I'm just making a point, that's saying that like, I'm undecided, that I, I think the way that we do this doesn't make sense, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave McCarthy, Ward 1, Council 48 Whitney Road. I'm in full support. I went through a few meetings of a prior house down there that didn't go through, and it like, the chairman said it's Rock Island Cove.
Oh, yes.
And Rock Island Cove, excuse me, is marsh. You know, it, it is what it is. These folks have modified it to try to satisfy the neighbors, and I think they've done a great job. It's on a big piece of land, they're going to utilize that land on that corner, they're going to do the right thing as, so did Mr. Silkox to the right 69 Pauzy, and raise his house because of that area. In the storm in 2018, that was the early storm in January, we had all that water come up on Rockland. Now, the gentleman who was up here who was against it, we were talking about Rockland Street, both Huntress, Hoopa, and Allerton are all getting done next year in regards to new drainage. You're not going to stop Mother Nature, even if you have a seawall. The water wants to come, it's going to come. The big thing down there is that you are on a peninsula that goes out to the crusher, and that drainage is the biggest solution, once it gets in there. Once it gets in there now, it doesn't go anywhere, especially if you've got a storm surge. But that's going to be rectified, at least on some of the side streets. So Rockland is being looked at. You know, I disagree with the comments, the city's not doing anything about Rockland. Paul Costello, the engineer down there, has done a hydrological study, I'm down there a lot with him, talking to the neighbors about how it comes in, and I know, you know, we got a geography class on east to west, and north to south, and everything, but it is what it is. So I'm in full support of the Bannons on what they're doing down there. We also had orchestrated by Mr. LaRoche, a community meeting where the neighbors attended. And all the neighbors, the majority of those neighbors are all in favor of seeing a new house get put up, get put up the right way, and try to defend their property from Mother Nature, as other houses are going to do down there, as we go along. If we get another storm, and we get knocked on our butt, you know, people are going to come back in, like the Post Island folks did, and, and Pauzy Street and Rotor area, they'll come in and they'll, they'll come in and they'll ask for relief like they did in Post Island. So I'm in full support, I think they've done a nice job. Brian did a great job regrouping and coming back, and I, I think it's, it'd be a great addition to Pauzy Street, so, thank you.
Allison, thank you for everything you've done for Ward 1, 2, thank you. Anyone else? Last call, call up out of hearing closed. I'll tell you, Mr. LaRoche did a nice job in this product back, and did a nice job for his clients, it's a beautiful piece of property you have, and no one deserves it more than a neck on that lot, and look out at that water every day, it's gorgeous, just a gorgeous piece, a gorgeous piece down there. I'll be voting in favor, and I hope everything works out for you.
I'm in favor, just have one suggestion, if we're backing it up four feet, if we can just, you know, not have that pavement in front of the garage?
Yeah, we can put a pavement in there.
Something, something impermeable there, is that acceptable?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm in favor then.
Seashells.
Yeah, something like that.
Whatever you got to-
The second, the door on its own?
Yeah.
I'm just allowed for paving only to the, to the double door.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Great.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
Likewise.
I'm in motion, please.
That's my shade here.
Wait.
Let's jam in case, so we're just, it's just a finding-
Finding.
And special permit, right?
Yeah.
ZBA 2276 Brian LaRoche for finding and special permit floodplain to replace the existing non-compliant flood compliant structure with a new flood compliant single-family home on the premise numbered 73 Pauzy Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the finding and special permit.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, someone?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian, for the work you put in on that, the work that's- Yeah, ZBA 2268 John Kavanaugh for variance to construct a shed dormer on the north side of the home to add two bedrooms on the premises number 19 Brinsley Street. That's right, it's not to add two bedrooms, it's to increase it by one, is that correct?
No, it was a four-bedroom house and will continue to be a four-bedroom house.
Okay, so you're not increasing, you're just moving the stunt, all right, I thought you had-
John Kavanaugh, 19 Brinsley Street. The, when we bought the house, there were, there was one good-sized bedroom and three small bedrooms with very little closet space on the second floor. We're combining two of those small bedrooms with the decent-sized bedroom to create a primary bedroom suite with walk-in closet and bathroom, and we'd like to put a shed dormer on the third floor, so we can put two bedrooms, bring it back to a four-bedroom house. It will only be the two bedrooms and some storage area on the third floor. It doesn't change the footprint or the existing height of the building.
The show? No, I know, and I was down there, and it's an interesting, I mean, I lived down there, and I'm saying Brinsley, I actually know where this is, and I did, and then I saw Winter, she goes, oh, I know, I know where it is, going down there. It's interesting, it was, it's interesting to get down there. I have been down there, they built the house, how long you been there, you just buy this?
We bought three years ago.
Three years, all right. They, they built the house down in front, they had a single story, they wanted to put a second story on there. The ex-mayor started flipping out, and goes, they just want to add a second floor to their home. I don't care, I live right behind, I look at the ocean, ain't changing my view. Mayor, have a seat. So Margaret LaFars, Ward 1 Counsel, agreed with me, he goes like this, just like this front of everyone. Jesus, why do I do, everything I've done for you, this is too funny.
I don't believe this storm move will impact anyone's view.
No, it will.
It already did that.
Yeah, it's already been impacted down the street. I have no questions on this, but I got a couple comments after.
I have no questions.
I have no questions. I initially thought you'd go on a six-bedroom, but yeah, look at them.
Yeah. No questions, no. Thank you, you can have a seat. Is anyone else speaking in favor? Counselor?
Dave McCarthy, 48 Whitney Road, Ward 1 Counselor, I took a ride down also. No, it just looks like, you know, a renovation of a second floor, and the dorm is being pushed out so we can pick up a couple more bedrooms, I mean, same amount of bedroom, but more space, but I'm in full support. I'm glad the folks down in Neck, you know, add to the homes like this and stay down there, it keeps a good clientele, so I'm in full support.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else? Second call?